Board of County Commissioners meeting to order at this time. Vice Chairman Thomas, we lead us in our invocation.
Let's pray. I most kindly heavenly Father, we come today thanking you for the help to come here today and to be able to sit here and make decisions regarding this county. God, be with this board, give us direction as only you would want us to lead. God, we thank you for giving your son a down and a cross so we may have eternal life. We ask you to go with us this week, watch over us, take care of us, keep us all safe. In your heavenly name I do pray. Amen.
Commissioner Webber, will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Sure, please rise and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, the borders of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Members of the board, you have the agenda before you. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion to approve agenda, the agenda with the addition of nine E access road rehabilitation project contract and nine F call for planning board public hearings to be added under new business and the removal of nine B voya update. Do I have such a motion? We have a motion. Any further discussion? Having here none, all in favor, vote for saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion's been approved. Item five A, resolution and appreciation of retiree Melinda Hudson. Thank you for being here. This is a resolution of appreciation, whereas Melinda Hudson served the people of Person County during her employment with the Person County Department of Social Services. And whereas Melinda Hudson served the citizens of Person County with compassion, honor, integrity, sincerity, and dedication, providing accurate and concise services for thirty years from August twenty, uh, August twenty first nineteen ninety-five to September first two thousand twenty-five. And whereas Melinda Hudson has earned the respect and admiration of all who have known her and worked with her throughout her career. And whereas Melinda Hudson was recognized as the local hero from Person County on April thirtieth two thousand twenty-five as part of a North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Heroic Hands Initiative, which aims to highlight local government employees who have dedicated their careers to public service. And whereas the county of Person County recognizes many contribu-, uh, contributions Melinda Hudson has made to the county as a work first social worker, adult services social worker supervisor two and three, and social work program manager and officers and we offer her sincere best wishes in her retirement. Now therefore, I call per year, Chairman of the Board of County Commissioners, do hereby extend this resolution of appreciation to Melinda Hudson for compassion and dedication and for continually striving to make Person County a better place to live and work, adopted this day, September fifteenth two thousand forty-five. Members of the board, do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Soon.
We have a motion. Any further discussion, having here none, please vote and by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, the resolution has been approved. Thank you so much for your service, ma'am. Would you like to say anything?
Um, I'm very grateful for the thirty years that I've been here. I feel blessed and I just appreciate everything and feel very supported.
Okay, thank you. All right, item five B, Golden Leaf Schools Initiative, Northern Middle School. Commissioner Royster.
Yes, um, I would like to speak on behalf of the Person County Board of Commissioners that, um, I stand a heartfelt congratulations to our school board here and the dedicated leadership faculty and students of Northern Middle School for being one of the fifteen schools selected in our state to receive the prestigious Golden Leaf Schools Initiative award. Um, I would like to add that earlier this year, um, I had the opportunity or honor, I would rather say, to tour Northern Middle School with our school board, with our state representative Ray Jeffers, state Senator Greg Meyer, and, um, the public, um, Person County School Board leaders, um, teachers, students, and just listened to the pride they had, um, in their school as well as, you know, freely sharing the needs of Northern Middle School as well as the strengths in the school. And I saw them both being a substitute there often. And I would just like to recognize, um, our school board and any of, um, Person County school staff here, um, this morning, and again to say congratulations to you all if you all could stand at this time. And I don't know if any of you would like to speak, um, on, um, pretty much what this award entails. I know it has, um, it's focusing a lot on, uh, mathematics, um, in the schools and pretty much helping our students be ready for what's to come, preparing them, um, starting in middle school so they'll be ready once they're entering into the, um, workforce and in turn to me will help improve here in Person County. They come back and bring those skills here, um, to use, um, within the workforce locally and everything. So, um, I congratulate you all, but I don't know if any of you, um, have anything you would like to say regarding this. But we congratulate you, not just Antonetta.
Good morning, good morning. On behalf of Dr. Rodney Peterson, who is submitting to Person County School and the Person County Board of Education, we want to thank you for this honor this morning of recognizing the hard work that Person County School has done. And we also want to give a big thanks for the support that we have received from the county commissioners to help us to be able to carry out the, the things that we have planned for Person County Schools. So again, thank you for this recognition, thank you for recognizing us, and thank you for your support. Thank you.
All right, um, public hearing, item six A, fiscal year twenty-seven, community transportation program funding application. Do I have a motion to enter the public hearing? We have a motion. All in favor, please vote for saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, we're now in the public hearing and I understand we have a presentation by Mitch Blake.
Chairman Preier, Commissioners, good morning. I am happy to represent the Transportation Department of Person County, otherwise known as Pats. We have a staff of nine full-time drivers, thirteen part-time drivers who cheerfully serve Person County each and every day. Uh, in FY twenty-five, Pats accommodated over fifty-four thousand trips and drove over two three hundred and eighty-five thousand miles with our fourteen vans and buses. Our mission is to provide safe, friendly, reliable transportation to the citizens and visitors of Person County, utilizing the most efficient manner possible to increase mobility and support a livable community. Today I bring before the board for approval the FY twenty-seven Community Transportation Program Application. This program is the grants program and divided into two categories. The administrative project consists of two hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars, of which requires a fifteen percent local match of thirty-one thousand two thirty-nine, and the combined capital grant, which is to be used for purchases of three replacement vehicles as well as some technology updates for a total of three hundred and sixty-three thousand, six hundred, of which a ten percent local match would be required of thirty-six thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. That means the total grant awards would be five hundred and seventy-one thousand, eight hundred and eighty, of which the total local share will be sixty-seven thousand, five ninety-nine. Our Transportation Advisory Board during its June fourth meeting recommended the submittal of the application for these funds, and the recommendation is for your approval of the grant submittal and the use of the local funds noted in the CY, FY twenty-seven Community Transportation Program Application. Do I have any questions?
Any questions for the presenter? Madam Clerk, do we have anyone speaking in favor or against?
No, sir, we do not.
All right. All right, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
We have a motion, all in favor, please vote for saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, the motion, uh, the public hearing has been closed. What is the desire of the board? Do I have a motion to approve the grant, um, uh, the approval to submit the fiscal year twenty-seven Community Transportation Program Application? Having here none, I will make the motion. Um, all right, motions been made, any further discussion?
No.
All right, all in favor of the motion, please vote for saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, the motion's been approved. Informal comments, at this time we do set aside a ten-minute comment period for the, um, public. Madam Clerk, how many do we have signed up?
Mr. Chairman, we have ten individuals signed up.
We have ten individuals, so, um, being ten minutes, I will grant, um, two minutes per speaker.
Yes, sir. Can I please instruct IT to set the timer for two minutes per speaker? Our first speaker is Dr. Kevin Lee with PCC.
And I would remind the audience to address the Commissioners as a whole, not as an individual Commissioner, and please do not address the crowd, only the Commissioners only. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
On behalf of Piedmont Community College, my name is Dr. Kevin Lee, I am the president of the, the institution, and, uh, today we're going to bring forward to you an opportunity for, uh, the college to sublease, uh, approximately five to six thousand, uh, five thousand to six thousand square feet of the nearly ninety thousand square feet south campus. Uh, this opportunity is in conjunction with Zachary as well as Duke, and, uh, they have representation here as well. Uh, our goal is to provide opportunities for our students that would otherwise not exist, as well as breaking down barriers for our students in order for them to obtain jobs. Uh, through this partnership, Zachary will be hiring approximately one thousand, uh, workers, and that is a unique opportunity for us to create a pipeline for our students while being on our south campus and being side by side, shoulder to shoulder, uh, with this company for the hiring process in hopes that we can get them skilled jobs in the skilled trades, um, realm of employment. Uh, so I would really, uh, hope that you consider this opportunity for us. Uh, it would be great for our community, uh, and great for our institution as well in moving forward the south campus. So I'll have it, Mr. Commissioner.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Next speaker we have is Connie White.
Good morning, and thank you all for your service. Um, we know that your time here is just a small microcosm of all the work you do. But I come to you as a Board of Trustee member for Piedmont Community College, and I'm encouraging you to vote in favor of Zachary locating on the south campus side of Piedmont Community College. The proximity for our students to Zachary is, is definitely a win-win. Um, they can assist our students with our soft, their soft skills such as interviewing, professionalism, provide mentorship, as well as possible future employment. We, the Board of Trustees, see Zachary at the south campus as an enhancement, a complement to our mission of preparing our students for their first job, a better job, and future pay raises. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker we have is Charles Harvey.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Honored County Commissioners, on behalf of our PCC Board of Trustees, I wish to express my support, given my colleagues' information for Zachary Company's proposals to sublet space at our south campus. This arrangement will benefit us academically. I kindly request your approval to proceed with this initiative. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next speaker we have is Julie Mabey.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I appreciate all that you do. Um, I'm coming to speak in support of the acquisition of the rail trail lands in Person County. I think that would help boost economic development in the area, bring connectivity to the neighborhoods and the commercial areas, and, um, it is also consistent with your, your future land use plan that was adopted in two thousand and twenty-one, the joint land use plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker we have is Colin. I can't read your handwriting, I'm sorry.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the board.
Good morning.
Um, I'm also here to discuss item nine C on the agenda, the, uh, Person County Multimodal Feasibility Up to, uh, Study for the Railroad Corridor and Acquisition. Uh, I'd like to start with a personal memory. Um, when I was a kid, I would bike down to the corner store for a slush and a stick of gum. I'd like to do it every day, but I definitely did it every weekend, made a lot of friends on the way, and one of these days I calculated me and my buddies would ride fifty miles a day. The danger I see in today is that kids either can't or and/or won't do that now. The roads aren't safe, and let's face it, they're all addicted to screens. I know I am, I gotta break away from it. The other issue is that there's giant cars flying around, heavy, half-drivers, powered by microchips from needless to say, God knows where. Um, and there's big screens in these cars, I don't own one, but who knows, maybe people are watching Netflix in them as well. Um, they're distracting, they're stealing drivers' attention, and you really don't see kids out anymore like back when I was a kid, riding around bikes, running around the city, and maybe it's just not safe. If cro-, if kids grow ups inside, and I'm saying this as a parent and a military service member, they grow up weaker, more dependent, glued to screens. It's not the future our county needs, it's not the future our nation needs. We need tough kids, resilient, independent. I've got a kid of my own, and I just don't feel safe letting him ride the way I did. And that's a problem. I mean, my little artillery, uh, non-artillery road in front of my house, it's a racetrack, people drag race down it. We just don't have enough enforcement to cover all bases here. This trail matters because it's a safe, controlled space for our kids to travel and play, and as well as our adults to get out, get outside, and be with our children in a safe, controlled manner. This quarter is gonna happen, as far as I can tell, no matter what, so the choice is between letting Person County control our land in Person County or letting some outside, outsiders manage, and God forbid the city of Durham. I think we need to be involved for our kids, our families, and to keep control of Person County by Person County. If we don't take the wheel, someone else will. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
Next speaker we have is Jeff Kiesner.
It's an honor to appear before you this morning. Jeff Kiesner, married to Jen, who you know a lot better than you know me. It's been my privilege to live here in Roxborough for ten years. We located from Pennsylvania to escape harsher winters and to be closer to our grandkids. I want to speak in favor of the bike trail. Um, as you can tell here, I'm, I have mobility issues, and bicycling has been a life changer for me. It's helped me to lose seventy pounds over the past couple of years. One of the things that's, uh, most important for me as a biker is that it improves my quality of life, in addition to, uh, losing a few pounds. We have to travel at least forty minutes to, uh, have access to the nearest greenway, and so one here in Person County is going to be a real advantage to us personally. I have no data to support the assertion that I'm going to make, but... I have no data to support the assertion that I'm going to make, but my hunch is that many of the folks that oppose the greenway that is proposed here in our county have neither walked nor ridden on one. I know that from my own self-awareness that I fear what I don't know, and I suspect that at least some of those who oppose the greenway have neither walked on or ridden on one. If any of the commissioners are undecided about this matter, I encourage you to hop in your car, drive 40 minutes to the nearest greenway, and go for a walk or ride your bike. It's a great experience. Thanks.
Thank you.
Next speaker we have is Jana Kisner.
Good morning, Jana Kisner. I've been here before in favor of Parks and Recs, and on behalf of Friends of the Parks, and as a citizen, and someone who enjoys bicycling. Back as a new resident to Roxborough in 2016, I was scouring the map to find the nearest greenway. It was disappointing not to find one. Now I scour a map to find greenways, other places to ride our bikes. Almost weekly, we take our time and our money out of Person County to find greenways elsewhere. But I realize people also fear this greenway, and I want to address the fear and the misinformation being spread about greenways. From my experience as a woman, I have bicycled miles and miles by myself in multiple states, and have never once felt threatened by any activity on a greenway. I have not seen any criminal activity, vandalism, or trespassing off the greenways. People are there on a linear park with their families, or young athletes training, people riding bicycles, walking their dogs, and the linear parks, which are greenways or linear parks, are beautiful and safe places to ride your bike. It's not just important for play and exercise and relaxation, for some time, for some people it's a form of transportation. Employees without cars have safe ways to get to work, young people have a way to get to school, parks or sports fields if their parents are at work. Although there is some dissent and fear about a greenway, the Friends of the Parks here's a much larger, wider community support for the future of parks, greenways, trails, and recreation. It's a worthy and much-needed investment in the economic development of our county, and I urge you to proceed with the land purchase and to keep our place at the table.
Thank you.
Next speaker we have is Kristy Harris.
I was told that there would be someone here from the DOT today, and that I would be able to ask questions. It doesn't look like that I will be able to ask questions, but my husband and I are huge hikers. We have been hiking all over the United States. We have a trip actually coming up to Pennsylvania next month. I'm opposing the trail, mainly for safety issues, because I have six grandchildren. The trail will be 20 foot from my bedroom window. I cannot safely send a six-year-old outside with people I do not know hiking 20 foot from my bedroom window. Another reason, I live on Flat River. The river is approximately 100 foot from my backyard. We already during Chantel were just about evacuated from our home due to flooding. If you remove more trees, there will be more flooding. Some of my other concerns is we have an HOA in our property. We do not want people parking on our road. Our road, we take care of that, we maintain that with our own money, and there will be people trying to park on our road, and we do want that on record, that that will not be happening. There will not be people parking on our road. We do not want our road used at all. We want that on record. We were not informed until a surveyor showed up in our driveway surveying our land, and the survey stop is literally, like I said, 20 foot off my bedroom window, 20 foot off my sunroom window. And we just built our sunroom, we spent $100,000, with windows all the way around our backyard. We would have never invested $100,000 last year on a sunroom knowing this trail was going to be built. So we feel like the grant was done illegally, and we are opposing this trail, and we will fight this trail. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker we have is Ronald Booker.
Good morning.
Good morning, members of the County Commission, and thank you for the opportunity to stand before you today. I simply come to add my voice to the support for the lease, sublease at the South Campus at PCC. I am the Chair of the Facilities, Buildings, and Grounds Committee for the college, and we see this as an incredible opportunity. How often do you have an employer actually housed, in-house, and paying you for the space to hire the people that we produce at PCC? Please vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker we have is Linda Dickerson.
I'm sorry for the way I look, I just had three surgeries last week, and I'm swelling bad. I am totally against this trail. We have so many reasons why we're against it. The main thing is safety. We want to know where the money is actually coming from, are the taxpayers going to have to pay for any of this? We want to know who's going to keep it up, who's going to clean up all the trash that will be scattered all over this trail? We have traveled in just about 47 states in the United States, and we have walked many, many, many trails. And yes, we do see a lot of trash, we have run into violence before, and our neighbor that just moved into our neighborhood about a year and a half ago, he's from Illinois, and he's voiced the same concerns. He said he was so worried about this trail because of violence. He said, "I don't want this in our neighborhood." We moved from Durham to Person County just because we were worried about the gangs. We don't want these gangs moving up here to Person County, and that's what we're afraid of. We see how the bikers ride without, you know, the police being able to do anything. What's going to happen up here in Person County? We don't have enough law enforcement. What's going to happen if someone gets hurt on these trails, and they're so far back in the woods that help can't get to them? We're just very concerned about safety. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes our informal comment period.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 8, Discussion Adjustment Approval Consent Agenda. Any discussion or adjustment to said consent agenda? Haven't hearing none, do I have a motion to approve?
So.
We have a motion, any further discussion? All right, please vote for saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion's been approved. New business, item 98, Piedmont Community College Sublease, County Manager.
Good morning, Commissioners. I will do a quick introduction to this item. You have heard from a few speakers already this morning related to PCC's request to sublease part of the building, which is originally was referred to as CHAT, and now as PCC South Campus. The county is the owner of the building and currently leases it to Piedmont Community College. Section 11.1 of the agreement states, "The college may not assign or sublease the leased property in whole or in part without the prior written consent of the county, which consent shall not be unreasonably withheld." So we do have representatives here who can share more information about this request, and our county attorney is also here and may be able to answer any questions that arise.
I understand, Dr. Lee, is Mr. Blackwell going to be representing the community college? Mr. Blackwell?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
So the presentation came to us from Zachary Commissioners. They reached out to us about the South Campus. You see the project overview there on the screens. So they're looking at coming, they have received the bid to build the gas facility at Duke. We also brought Duke in as well, Duke helped line this up. We had a meeting with them at that meeting, I think another slide you may have, they presented 1,000 jobs that they will be hiring here in Person County. You see some of the breakdown there in front of you, those are the type of programs that we're currently offering at our South Campus. We have HVAC, we have plumbing, we have some electrical academy going, those are the jobs that they will be hiring for as well. After we had that meeting there on campus, we actually toured South Campus, they were very interested at that point, once seeing the office space that is available, about talking about a possible lease there as well to come in. There also will be some training opportunities from our students as well. So it is a partnership, like you heard from those speakers, that it'd be very beneficial to our students as well.
I would ask if any representative from Duke or Zachary would like to...
Yes, sir, there should be representation from Duke and Zachary here as well.
Thank you for considering this opportunity. When Zachary first approached us about locating a hiring center in Person County, we discussed potential locations, and my initial temporary thought would be the Small Business Center, but as further discussions occurred, they needed something long-term, obviously to hire the numbers that you saw on the board. I asked Jody Blackwell if the South Campus might be an option, thinking it would be a win-win-win for our students, for the college, for the company, and also for the community. You'll hear from the team that they'll not only look at hiring PCC students, but they'll have outside folks, we're working with Granville County as well, Vance Granville Community College, so they'll have other students and folks looking for workforce opportunities coming in. If Zachary has interviews with these candidates and finds that additional training is needed, obviously the step across the hall would be a perfect opportunity for Piedmont Community College to offer new training opportunities as well. So we hope that you'll consider this as an option for both Duke Energy and Zachary as we begin to move forward on this project. Thank you.
Good morning, my name's Russ Horton, I'm the Project Director for Zachary for Person County. So I can't see it on there, the dates are pretty small, but we're actually breaking ground today on the project. We have a local subcontractor to North Carolina that's going to do a lot of the civil work, site civil work, so it's a lot of excavation and fill. This project's going to be located right next to the current operating Roxborough steam plant. We're going to be out there, starting today actually, all the way through '29. If Duke elects to move forward with a second project, which would be adjacent to this one, we'll be out till 2030. So it's a great opportunity for us, we're excited to be here, excited to partner with Person County, Roxborough. We'll be here for quite a while, so we want to be a good neighbor, but for us to be successful, we're going to have to hire people, and it's a considerable amount. There's a lot of work going on in the Carolinas, in Virginia, so one of our concerns coming into the area, we've done previous work in North Carolina, but was really can we staff up the job? Peak shows 625 craft, but we'll actually, if we have both projects going, probably be closer to 800 people out there, and so that's a lot of people that we have to staff up for. So we are looking at this partnership as something that, you know, we can help train folks and bring them onto an industrial project site, but it's also going to help us staff the project to make sure that we can build this successfully for Duke Energy. The other good news here, this is a natural gas facility, it's advanced class, so it's going to generate 1,300 megawatts of electricity, which is more than the current steam plant or coal plant that's out there. If we build both of them, that's about 2,600 megawatts of electricity, it's going to replace those coal plants. So much more efficient, much cleaner energy, coal plant will shut down once these start operating, so it's really, it's a win-win for the community as well. We're also looking at doing work outside of this area in North Carolina, so employees that join this project, you know, would have the opportunity to travel to different work in North Carolina with Duke Energy and Zachary. So appreciate you listening and considering this option, but we look forward to working with Jody, Dr. Lee, and the team to make this successful partnership for the next four or five years.
Thank you. For members, have any comments or questions for the presenters?
Have you already come to agreeable terms for your sublease?
No, ma'am, those would still be options that we would need to discuss as far as pricing and all that, we just wanted to make sure that there was approval to move forward at this point.
Okay, I think, I agree, it sounds very complimentary for the space. I say bring on the jobs and investment. I'm for it, I'll move for approval.
All right, all right. We have a motion for approval, any further discussion? Haven't hearing none, all in favor, please vote for saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion's been approved. Thank you so much. Thank you. All right, item 9C, Person County Multimodal Feasibility Study and 501 Railroad Corridor Acquisition Update, Mr. John Hill. And I would like to remind members of the public, this is only for informational purposes today. I asked to have this item put on the agenda, there's no action to be taken, but I thought it was important to kind of clear up some misconceptions around this idea, and have the Parks and Rec Director go into it further. Thank you.
Morning, Commissioners.
Thank you.
How are y'all doing today?
Well.
All right, I'm here, I was called upon to come give y'all an update on the multimodal feasibility study, and we'll give you a timeline and give you an update of where everything is with the transaction between Norfolk Southern and Conservation Fund. Okay, let's see if I can learn how to do this real quick. Do you know what button to put?
John, if you want to say next slide, just instruct IT.
Okay, next slide, please.
There you go, always ask Michelle, she knows.
All right, just to give you a little, just a real quick history of how we got here, and I'm going to be really brief with this slideshow, because we've been in this process for five years now or so. So this, the talks about the acquisition of this railroad corridor dates me. This has gone well before me as the Recreation Director, I've been here 26 and some change, and before the director for that, and before the director for that. So the conversation between Norfolk Southern and the Conservation Fund, at the time it wasn't the Conservation Fund, has always been under discussion. So, moving forward, can you back up to the...
Previous slide, please.
Previous slide, thanks. So moving forward to, this conversation came back up in 2022. So the conversation between Conservation Fund and Norfolk Southern started entertaining their, moving forward with the not wanting to purchase the railroad corridor from Person County and from Durham County, and of course, that would be coming from Norfolk Southern, they wanted to purchase it, and eventually it would be conveyed back to NC DOT for Railroad Bank. And that's very important to understand, that it's always going to be a transportation corridor. Next slide, please. Okay, so whenever we heard about that, whenever that news was brought to us in 2022, we actually made a proposal to the, the Parks and Rec Department made a proposal to this board, because at the time you had ARPA funding, and we thought that it would be an easy funding source to go ahead and jump onboard after the acquisition from the Conservation Fund, so that we could put our foot in the door, and that's what it was, try to put our foot in the door, so that we could have management control as a county of the railroad corridor. December 5th, 2022, y'all needed more information, so I came to you and asked for the ability to apply for a feasibility study of the corridor itself, and that grant was through NC DOT, and of course, we were funded for that particular project, the study. Can you go back one more slide, go back to the previous slide? Forward, there, thanks. So during this study, and I didn't put all the meeting dates and so on and so forth in this, because I wanted us to be brief, if anybody needs to see that information, of course, you know, it's on our website. So from that time that we started the feasibility study... Um, so from that time that we started the feasibility study, um, in 2022, um, we came to you again because we knew that the conversations between Conservation Fund and Norfolk Southern was, was moving along. So we asked for, um, a, uh, a CIP request, again, so that we could get our foot in the door, uh, to make that purchase for, for management control of the railroad corridor. That was in April 17th, uh, 17th, 2023. Next slide, please. April 15th, 2024, uh, public meetings were, have been taking place. Um, you know, we're still in the middle of the feasibility study, but nearing the end of the feasibility study. Uh, we came to you in, uh, April 15th, 2024. We made a request, uh, with a more defined number from Norfolk Southern and the Conservation Fund of what Person County's portion would be. Um, I applied, uh, or I asked, requested, uh, $480,000 to go towards additional, um, to go towards a match so that we could acquire funding for our portion of the railroad corridor. Does that make sense?
Yep.
So that's what that 4, uh, 480 was. That was a, up to 480 was, was a grant match.
So on that, and, uh, so in the agenda abstract, it says the 480, um, was to support the corridor acquisition, but that goes to DOT for them to acquire it.
So, yes, so, so, so all the funding, all the funding for these projects come from federal dollars that come down to NC DOT. That means that if you're a part of, if, if you wanna be a part of the purchase or the act, or the management control, you have to pay into it 20% of whatever that total cost was. So we calculated what our portion would be, and our, our portion would be roughly about $1.5 million at the time, in that range. Uh, so it came out to be, you know, we wanna have the ability to, to max out that, um, uh, that, that amount of money so we could go a little bit beyond that 1.5 million, if that makes sense.
Yeah, so I just wanna clarify that it's actually DOT that's acquiring the corridor, not Person County.
Correct. What, we're, and we'll get to that here and say, we're acquiring management control. And that's, that's the main point of this. Um, August 24th, motive, the, um, August 2024, of course, the feasibility was study, uh, was, was finalized. Uh, we came, uh, again to you in, uh, March 17th, 2025, to have the feasibility study adopted. Okay, um, let's, let's note one thing, feasibility study has, feasibility studies have to be in place so that you can get points for your grant funding. Uh, because if you don't have a study in place, you, you won't get the points and you won't get the money to move forward with your projects. All right, next paragraph, I mean, next, uh, slide. Okay, the project timeline. Um, so in May, uh, continuing the project timeline. So this past May, 2025, we were notified by, uh, the Conservation Fund that they had signed a contract with Norfolk Southern. Um, and of course, this contract is still underway to this day. Um, uh, they're in their due diligence phase. So the, the next line where it says, uh, that the, they're looking to close between November, uh, 2025 this year and January 26. So that's the timeframe right now. They are currently in their due diligence phase. Just recently, two weeks ago, um, NC DOT called a meeting with all the partners. Can you back up one slide? Thanks. Um, NC DOT, uh, called a meeting with their partners, that was last Friday. Uh, and as they are moving forward with the closing out of this purchase, they want to have a, a conversation with the partners to understand where the matching funds would flow from the counties to NC DOT so that they can match the 20% that goes with the federal grant. And, and does that make sense? So we're just trying to figure out where we're gonna do that, uh, how that money flows, but also to start the talks to ma, to establish an agreement between each jurisdiction and county on an agreement for management control, basically a lease agreement. Um, next slide. All right, moving forward, so if Person, this is if Person County continues to be a partner of this and move forward with the acquisition. Uh, you're gonna gain, you're gonna gain, uh, controlled, um, uh, management control of the railroad corridor portion in Person County. You're gonna secure your management control of the railroad corridor, and what this does is this keeps you having management control over your jurisdiction, and there's no opportunity there for another's jurisdiction to be able to take management control of Person County's railroad corridor property.
So just to clarify, so if we do not move forward being a participant in acquisition, Durham County can control Person County, um, that portion in Person County?
That's correct. Um, and so, and here's another thing that, and I, and, and can you back up one slide, please? Okay, so, and, and just, just to clarify with that, I, I made sure to reach back out to NC DOT. That was told to us from the very get-go, um, you know, five years ago or whatever, we had multiple meetings. Um, but I want to confirm that. So after our meeting on Friday, I dug in for a week with NC DOT to have some more discussions, and we do have confirmation that that is the case. They, they want us to continue to be partners, eh, with this project. Um, they want Person County to have management control. But also, they, they, if, if we don't, they will convey it to a number of organizations to have management control of, of the corridor. That could be, and they gave me different scenarios. Like, for example, crazy example right here, they gave me a scenario, if Durham City did not want their portion, they would offer it to Person County, which we probably don't want, um, or they would offer it to Durham County. Vice versa, if Person County didn't want management control of Person County, the first partner they would offer it to would be Durham County, and then vice versa, uh, city of Durham. Now, let's say nobody wanted it. There's a number of other organizations throughout the state that are partners with, that are, are partners with NC DOT, Person County, Durham County, so on and so forth. They would move along the line to offer that to those particular entities. One being East Coast Greenway, who gave a million dollars towards this project. Um, one could be TTI, uh, one could be, you know, there's a number of, of partners that have been working on this. Uh, so just know that we are, we want to make sure that we have management control to decide what we do.
So Mr. Hill?
When we do it.
I, I don't wanna throw the city of Durham or the county of Durham under the bus, and I know you don't either.
No, no, by no means.
We, to me, I think the most important part of this presentation is what's on that slide right there, right now. What is that, four different paragraphs? And that's the crux of the matter, of what we are trying to reach and gain control from any municipality. Not one particular, but any other municipality having control over the development of that corridor in Person County. So I think what you have on the slide right now is the most important part of this presentation.
Yes, sir. Um, so, uh, let's move on down. Uh, acquire ability for, to grant legal access across the railroad corridor. Uh, right now, you don't necessarily have that, um, but, you know, that's, that's something that needs to be, that will be worked out with NC DOT and the county itself about granting access across. Uh, and they gave us a scenario of how that would work, uh, but that, between management and, of course, that, that's higher than me. I'm just, I'm just supposed to throw the ball in the court. Um, so, uh, here's, here's a very important slide, a part of that slide that, that hits home to me. So since this process has been, has started, um, I think it's very important to note that we talked about phase one and phase two of the project. Phase one is only phase one because phase two is not currently available. The ultimate goal for me, from a equity standpoint in town, in a park equity standpoint, the most important part to me, is that phase two can happen, meaning the northern portion. It's not for sale. So if we proceed with our partners and move forward with this management control, this purchase, this acquisition, and this may set a precedence to Norfolk Southern to give us the ability to purchase the northern portion of the corridor, which is in, which is in your main drag for your economic development. That would be a home run. Um, so just, that's a very important portion to understand. Um, next slide, please.
Before you leave this one?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so does control also mean they take on the maintenance of it? So if, if we didn't move forward and another entity had management control, they would also assume the maintenance, right? The, all the costs to maintain it?
So if, if, are you talking about if, if a trail was actually built? Yeah, they, that would, that would be the, the, that would take place.
Right.
Listen, yeah, let's, let's, let's elaborate a little bit more on that example. Yes, they would take up management control, but they would also take up maintenance of that particular corridor. They would also take up building it. But there, there's a very important thing to note about that. Um, and, and we'll get to it here in this upcoming slide, and I'll, I'll go ahead and say it now. By Person County not having, uh, management control, another entity comes in here. It's just like the lady just spoke. She, she had some apprehensions about her property. Um, I could understand that. I completely understand that. Here's the thing about Person County. Person County is more willing to work with their citizens in future development than another entity with control of that railroad corridor working. Because, because the next slide will point out, this is not, this is, this is property. This is straight-out property that's owned by Norfolk Southern, and then it will be in the DOT. So, so having that control gives us the ability to work with landowners if and when you ever decide to build something, but it gives us the opportunity to work with landowners, our local land, landowners versus Durham. Nothing against Durham, but, huh, Person County citizens probably don't wanna work with Durham about property and, or, or triangle trails or whoever, you know, they wanna work with Person County. Um, anyway, next slide. Did I answer your question?
Well, yeah, but to your knowledge, has the city of Durham or Durham County taken any action on this project?
So we did get, uh, uh, I have been talking closely with Durham, the representatives of Durham. They are committed to this project. They, they do have their money at the table.
So they voted as an elected body?
Well, I mean, they, they, it's in their CIPs, basically. So, so the next step is just the formality of, of agreeing to the management control. I mean, when you, when you voted for your CIP, you voted to move forward with, with the purchase.
And to further clarify Commissioner Webber's, um, question, I was on that conference call, uh, last week, and I will say that they are, I heard directly from their representatives that they are, they are moving forward, um, with their part in the project.
I saw that they got a $500,000 grant towards it.
Yeah.
I don't know if that was something we were eligible for or?
It, it was something we were eligible for. We elected, so they, they, we were gonna write it. Um, um, and I don't wanna get too far in the ways, but we were gonna write that grant, um, and I was coordinating with Durham, but we already had our money. So our, that 480 already secured our CMAC match funding. So, um, there was really no purpose for us to do it, and two grants in there for the same project, it would have hindered their ability to, you know, to move forward with that. That was actually the East Coast Greenway that wrote that grant, not Durham. Um, so that, that million dollars that you see that's in that, you know, um, in the line item, that's East Coast Greenway, and they're the ones who wrote the grant for the project. They're the other partner of, of the, that's not a jurisdiction. Um, okay. Person County moves forward with acquisition. Uh, we opened up a lot of opportunities for economic development. I mean, you know, there's so many opportunities out there, businesses popping up along the 501, uh, offering, you know, access, so on and so forth. Protect access to residents and existing rail crossings. So one thing we need to realize that we don't know what's gonna happen with the corridor. We don't, we don't know what the railroad company would do if they kept, kept the corridor. Uh, or NC DOT just kept and made control. So, you know, the existing crossings you have now, it would give you an opportunity to have a say-so of those. Purchasing options, um, this is a big one here, too. So just because you move forward, which you've already put it in your CIP, just because you move forward does not bind you to building a trail on any particular segment of the railroad corridor.
Can you repeat that one more time?
It's right there, it's right there, it's written, huh?
I just want you to say it one more time.
Purchasing the, purchasing, the, purchasing the, the option to management of the railroad corridor does not bind Person County developing a trail.
Are you sure that the DOT is not gonna say, "We will lease it to you contingent upon these things," and there's not gonna be some memorandum of agreement before they agree to lease it back?
So, so we don't know what the, we don't know what the management agreement says. So, I mean, that's, that's in hand, that, we, we don't know what that management agreement says.
So then it could bind Person County to developing the trail.
I mean, I guess that's getting pretty, you know, hypothetical, but the thing about it is this. Person County controls the purse grant, the, you know, controls the, the, the economic situation in Person County. So Parks and Rec or anybody can't build anything if you don't put forth the money towards doing that. So having said that, and the reason I put that in there is because the fees, when people see a feasibility study, they're automatically are like, "Man, that's a plan to build a trail." No, that's not a plan to build a trail. That's a tool to get you an opportunity for, down the road, uh, but that's not a plan. This body has to put forth money for development. Um, the federal government has to put forth money for the, for the, you know, so on and so forth. But no, I mean, just because you move with management, um, the agreement to manage it and go on a lease doesn't mean you're gonna start breaking ground right through somebody's, you're talking about, if ever, 25 years down the road. You're talking about 10, I mean, you're talking a long time, a lot of conversations, and I won't be standing here for that. Um, um, anyway.
But I would just need to hear from DOT that they would lease it to Person County and allow Person County to let it be dormant if that's what they chose to do.
If that's what they choose.
Right.
Yeah, and that would be a conversation between you all and, and NC DOT.
Mr. Morpheus, would it be fair to say that before we signed any kind of contract that that would already be stipulated in that contract, that development or no development?
I, I think that's right. I mean, what I would say is at this point, that, as Mr. Hill has said, you're talking about, uh, money for acquiring management rights, and I'm not aware and haven't seen any documents in the management right discussion that says, "By the way, you're also obligating yourself to future, um, you know, acquisition funds or actual acquisition and development of the trail." And just to emphasize what Mr. Hill said, I think you would have to at some point separately appropriate funds, um, either separate budget or capital improvements somewhere that, that hasn't been done yet. And I don't think there's really a good mechanism for DOT to force another local government to appropriate funds sometime in the future.
Thank you.
But they could choose not to allow us to have the management rights if we would, if we refused or didn't have plans to do that?
I, I, to be perfectly honest, Commissioner Webber, and I'd have to see some kind of agreement, um, between or proposed documentation. Um, the, the general rule is that you can't obligate the local government to commit funds in the future, um, outside of things like contracts, you know, but that may be exactly what you're talking about. So I would need to see something, but I think it would be unusual, um, in this kind of arrangement when we're talking about acquiring management rights. But if there's anything further, when we get a little closer down the road to actually signing something with DOT, we'd certainly be reviewing for that and would flag it for the commissioners if it came up.
All right, next slide, please. Is that, did you hear that? Yeah, that's above my pay grade. Um, okay, so what happens if we don't move forward with the acquisition? The biggest one, you lose, you lose the opportunity for management control. Um, you don't have to build a trail, huh, you don't have to do anything. You just, it, it's gonna be conveyed to another jurisdiction. Um, yeah, the next, the next line, NC, NC DOT is going to offer that to another jurisdiction or organization. Um, here's, here's a pretty important slide that we threw in there that, that I think's re, pretty important. So you know Norfolk Southern is, is getting ready to merger or be bought by Union Pacific Railroad. Uh, you know, one of the biggest railroads in the world. Um, you don't know what they have in mind for that railroad. You know, whether they, we just don't know. Can y'all go back a slide? Okay, um, the, the funding that we used, uh, a portion of your, uh, a portion of your CIP to get CMAC, of course, of course, that funding is already in the coffers of NC DOT, so that is going to benefit another jurisdiction. So, i- if we don't use it, then they'll, they'll still use it, uh, for another jurisdiction. Um, Person County may never, ever get an opportunity to do this again. Um, it, they talked about it well before me, they talked about it when I came on board in 2000, you know, 2000 whatever, and then they, and it died, um, uh, for some reason in 2005, between the two, two, between Nor- uh, Norfolk Southern and whoever was wanting to purchase it, I think Conservation Fund or whoever, but that didn't come back again for 20 years, 20 years. Um, so I wouldn't miss out on opportunity. Uh, regardless of participation, uh, NC DOT and the Conservation Fund will continue to move forward with this acquisition. Next slide, please. All right, we threw this in here because we want to get some misconceptions out of the way, and there's more misconceptions there that we would love to get out of the way, but for time's sake. Uh, Person County's feasibility study is adopted for development, developing a trail. It's not, that is a tool. Feasibility study just gives you some type of vision of where you think you could go in the future. What's feasible, is there a railroad corridor there, is there a right of way somewhere? That is the tool. Moving forward with an actual plan gets deeper into the pockets of Person County and into engineering. Um, so, and it's a very long drawn out meticulous thing that doesn't happen in one year. Um, purchasing a railroad corridor authorizes development of trail. Development of a trail is a fut- is a future decision of the Board of Commissioners.
And DOT.
We don't know that yet, we, I mean, we, we, we don't know that yet, that's, that's between the management agreement. Um, what, it, now if they, if it went the other way, yes. If it, if they did allow some other person to take it, of course it would. Um, uh, if the railroad corridor is abandoned, then the land, then the land reverts to the owners of, uh, adjacent residents and, um, businesses. That's not the case. In this particular case, Norfolk Southern owns the property outright. Uh, there's, there are some cases where they are leases, so on and so forth, but in Person County and Durham County, they're outright ownership of Norfolk Southern. Um, Person County has been, uh, surveying property along the railroad corridor for development. That's not true. The surveyors you see are not Person Counties, they have not been sent there by Person County. They have been sent there by Norfolk Southern and the Conservation Fund. They're working for those two to go through the due diligence process be- between them and their purchase of the railroad corridor. All right, that's a lot of information in a nutshell. Um, next paragraph, please, uh, next slide, please. All right, um, so that's where we are with this project. Um, you know, we're at that steps, I mean, that four years went by just, just like that. Um, so that's your update.
Any further questions from, from the board?
I'd just like to thank Mr. Hill for all the work he's done over the years. I've been on the Recreation Advisory Board since 2007, and it's been talked about for a long time, and he's put a lot of effort into it. And this will protect our citizens in this county, and it will protect our future economic development for railway if we need it in the future, so I appreciate what you've done.
Thank you. That is very important, too. The NC DOT did say this will never, it won't ever go back to private ownership. Because since, basically, this is a rail bank. I mean, it's gonna be, it's always, always gonna be a railroad corridor just in case Person County needs a railroad or Durham needs a railroad. NC DOT keeps it as a transportation corridor so that it can revert back to a railroad corridor if needed one day.
Thank you so much, John.
All right, thank y'all.
Appreciate the presentation, very important. Next item, item 9D, Strategic Plan Quarterly Report, County Manager.
Included in your agenda packets is our final quarterly report on the strategic plan for the fiscal year, which ended June 30th. So you were provided quite a bit of detail for progress made over the course of the year for the variety of goals and objectives that were set for the strategic plan. And you did vote to, uh, do some revisions to the strategic plan for the current fiscal year, so we will have incorporated those into our reporting tool, and we'll be reporting back to you on progress made in the first quarter since we're nearing the end of that, um, in the near future. But I do want to say that I am very proud of the work that all of our departments did over the previous fiscal year, um, working to carry out the vision and the mission that was set by the Board of Commissioners, and implementing the budget for the fiscal year and applying those funds to the county's priorities. And hopefully you are able to gain some good details of all of that work through the quarterly report, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
When are we gonna start on the feasibility study for the facilities?
Ray is currently drafting an RFP for that, but it has not yet gone out. So that should be done in the near future, he's got several examples that he's been working from.
And that's a facilities assessment, not a feasibility study.
Right, that's the comprehensive facilities assessment for the county.
I'm excited for that though.
Good, me too.
Any other feedback to the County Manager?
Well, uh, Ms. Catherine, you've been very busy. There was 931 pages in the agenda packet. But I would like to say in a, in a, in a joking way, it's kinda like Grandma's biscuits, it needs a little shortening.
You're correct, so, and, and, yes, we put that together and it is quite lengthy. It may be that in the future, so the one lengthiest portion of that is the hazard mitigation plan. Would y'all have found it more beneficial to just link to that somewhere rather than actually having?
I'm good with it, I'm just...
It's, it's big, we, we recognized that once we had put it together, but sometimes it's nice to have it all together.
We did, you used to have page numbers by each agenda item, right? If we could do that, is it, I know it's hard for you to do that, 'cause you probably go back and change the agenda multiple times.
It's a formatting issue, and with it being uploaded through Laserfish, it's a learning process for me, but I'll be glad to include that on our next one.
Okay, thank you.
Now, I'd echo what, um, Commissioner Long said, that, um, and Wilburn, you all have been really busy. When I was looking at this, um, you know, the things that you've completed, um, initially not started and making progress, then you see you've completed, so I appreciate, um, the hard work for, um, I know it wasn't just you, Catherine, under your leadership, and as well as the department heads in each of these areas, are the things that you all have, um, done and accomplished. Um, and then we're getting ready for the next one, so.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Item 9E, Access Road Rehabilitation, uh, Project Contract, County Manager.
Okay, so this is an added agenda item. We have the opportunity to commence the Access Road Rehabilitation Project at Raleigh Regional Airport in Person County. Uh, here shortly, the contractor would actually like to get started on October 1st, so that's why we went ahead and added this item to your agenda packet for your consideration. Um, this project will rehabilitate the road that, uh, the private road or the airport property road that begins once state maintenance ends on Montgomery Drive. And we've been looking forward to doing this project for quite a while. We bid it out, and then we bid it out a second time, and we only had one responsive bidder for this particular project. And staff and our airport engineers did work with them to bring the total cost down to what we had previously projected would be available. We have funding through the Airport Infrastructure Grant that we have saved up for several years that we will use towards this project. Um, we may need some of the fiscal year 26 funding to go towards it, and if that's the case, um, we will request it. The, uh, North Carolina Department of Transportation has approved the use of this funding for this purchase, but we don't actually have the money in hand yet. But we do have money available within the Airport Construction Fund to go ahead and start on the project, and then we will reimburse ourselves with the AIG funding when it does come to the county. So we would request that the commissioners award the contract to Fred Smith Company in an amount of $675,274, and authorize me to execute the contract pending legal review, because we do not actually have the contract in hand yet, they are still working on developing that. But we did work with Fred Smith Company on the most recent project that we did at the airport for the runway rehabilitation, and we're very pleased with their work. And Ray is here as well, if you have any questions for him, he can also answer those.
And, uh, Ms. Chairman, I, I just add, um, if there is some legal issue, which I doubt there will be, we would certainly pause approval and bring that back to the board.
It really needs it.
It does.
Any questions for the County Manager?
I'd just like to say, since my family owns a paving company, I'm gonna recuse myself from this. I don't have any idea they're gonna call us for anything, but in total transparency, I'm recusing myself from this, but...
Thank you.
Okay. All right, do I have a motion to formally recuse Commissioner Long from this vote? We have a motion. All in favor, please vote for saying aye. Aye. All right, the ayes have it, Commissioner Long has been recused. What is the desire of the board?
May for approval.
All right, we have a motion for approval. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all in favor, please vote for saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, 4-0. All right, next item. Item 9F, Call for Planning Board Public Hearings, County Manager.
Okay, so our interim planning director, Margaret, is here, she can provide some background on this item. We are seeking some feedback from the board, um, per the previous planning board meeting as to whether or not you all would support the planning board calling public hearings for a few different items. And then there's one that the Board of Commissioners has also brought up for a potential hearing. So we would just like to get a vote from you all following discussion as to whether or not you would like the planning board to hear these potential text amendments.
So in, I feel like there's a question on your face, Commissioner Thompson, okay. Um, in working with Commissioners Long and Wilborn, we came up with a number of text amendments that, um, were shared with the public at some open houses, and then I moved them through the process, not thinking to bring them back here, which I apologize for. Took them to the planning board, uh, last week. Uh, they looked at them and said, "We would," due to the complexity of these issues, especially with some of the changes that were being proposed, they felt like they really wanted to hear that, um, this board wanted to see broader consideration of these text amendments, um, before they just voted to send them to hearing. So the, the two things in particular were, um, changes to allow RV parks as a use by right in the RC District, and, um, some language about short-term rentals, uh, picking up some of the language from the draft UDO for short-term rentals. But, um, honestly, my recommendation as a professional planner is that short-term rentals really aren't a land use issue and really, um, aren't best managed through a land development ordinance. Uh, a lot of the concerns that come up with short-term rentals are for other departments, not planning and zoning. Planning and zoning enforcement can be extraordinarily slow, um, and that just might not be the best tool. So I would actually recommend that we not address those in the ordinance and let folks do as they, as they see fit, continuing, of course, to manage the ones that are, rise to the levels of actually being businesses, um, beds and breakfasts and hotels and those sorts of things. And then there was also some significant changes to the, to the use table, um, to add a number of def- defined uses. A lot of our uses are not actually defined, and that can cause a lot of confusion. And then to consolidate a number of uses. Uh, when I started, we had 170 uses in the permitted use table, I think I've got it down to about 130, um, give or take, even with adding a few uses. We had probably about a dozen or two dozen different types of things that were all retail sales. And, and, you know, a retail sales operation is a retail sales operation. You have those that display items outside and those that don't. And I think those two uses cover just about every type of retail you can have. Um, office and personal services all tend to be very, very similar, with the exception of medical. Medical clinics run different than, say, a surveyor or a real estate office, so we want to keep medical called out separate, but then combine a lot of the other, uh, office uses. And then there were a number of uses that, um, our ordinance just didn't recognize that had been talked about in drafting the UDO, wanted to put those in. Um, and then a few other places, just looking at a few handful of uses, changing, uh, what the process was to get some of those approved. So, basically, when the planning board looked at all that and they said, "That, that's kind of a lot, we would really just kind of like to see that the commissioners really want us spending our time on this, um, it's pretty complex, and, uh, maybe we can find a better way to group some of the changes to the permitted use table with definitions so that here's the group of uses that we're taking out and consolidating into these two things that are called retail, and then here's some definitions that go with that, and that's one package." Not that they wouldn't all be at the same hearing, but group them together so that they're in more bite-sized chunks and easier for folks to, to digest. I readily admit that I spend all of my time on this, and so sometimes I get a little, um, too rambunctious and try and put too many things together and make it hard for folks to follow along with me, so. Questions?
Oh, yeah. So, in approving this today or not approving it, anything that we approve is not changing anything about the ordinance. It's about whether the things in this packet will go to a public hearing with the planning board.
Correct.
Right.
The only, yeah, the, the request would be to call public hearings on all these things, we can't just unilaterally change the ordinance.
And if, I'm just saying this for the benefit of the public, so if, um, the, before the commissioners approve it, before it gets approved, it has to come to this body, and there would be a public hearing attached to that approval.
Correct, correct, both boards have to hold a public hearing.
Both boards have to hold a public hearing. Then why do we need to vote on whether to handle?
Well, mine says we're not giving a vote today, we're just getting guidance from the planning board.
So, you can either take a vote if you want to, to say, uh, move this to a planning board public hearing, because you, as the commissioners, can initiate a public hearing with, at the planning board level, or this has gone to the planning board for discussion, and they have indicated they would like to know whether or not the board supports having a public hearing. So I think they've basically indicated they would hold a public hearing, that they, basically, they will have called it if the commissioners support their doing so. So whatever is the cleanest, uh, for moving forward, but the planning board did want some, um, support to, to know that the Board of Commissioners as a body would like to move these forward to a public hearing.
So what I was getting at is, we had wanted to get all this cleaned up before Margaret leaves, because then we're starting over with another planning director that's gotta get up to speed and all of that. Um, and obviously, she's very knowledgeable and, um, really appreciate all that she's done to make this, you know, so concise, and I don't think it's a lot at all with what she's done. It's very straightforward, it makes everything clean, and lets everybody know what, what they're working with. Um, so I was wondering if we can just, since they've met about it and discussed it, if we can just move forward with the commissioners' public hearing? Because one thing that happens is, when the planning board holds a public hearing, people sign up and come and speak, and then the commissioners don't have the benefit of hearing from those people because they think, "I've done that, I've said that," and they don't always know that they may need to come back and let the board, who has the final vote, hear their same arguments. Um, but if you're saying that there has to be a public hearing at both boards, then definitely, I think, yeah, we should move forward with it and, and the way that you've presented it. And I agree with you that we, I assume what you're talking about is at the bottom of page two and the, all of page three, about the UDO language for the short-term rentals, because...
Yes.
Um, what came up with that, when the, um, attorney, well, one thing that came up is that there's always a question of how do you enforce this?
Exactly.
And pretty much you can't for any of that, so there's no need to have it in there. Um, and hearing from you, the 30-year professional, that you don't think this is a land use issue, and I totally agree with you, so, um, I think the way that you presented it to us, the way that you presented it in those public meetings... to us, the way that you presented it in those public meetings, um, all of it, other than a few typos that I can mention if you want.
Absolutely. I always help finding typos, especially comments.
I think that's the path forward, to get this moved through, if at all possible, while you're still here, through this board.
And so if, just correct me if I'm wrong, TC, but the, so the, um, the board today, you could vote to send this to a public hearing at the next planning board meeting, and then it would continue to move. Or you can state your support, and then the planning board in October would receive that and call the hearing. That gets at your issue about how long I'm going to be here. If all of these things are put on the October public hearing for the planning board, one, it'll be a long night for them because it'll be a lot of people to listen to. Um, but you do have that ability to place this on their agenda. That's what the, that's what the ordinance says. I mean, the, this board can vote to send something to public hearing, the Board of Adjustment can vote to send something to public hearing, and the planning board can vote to send something to public hearing.
I have nothing further. I know one of the reasons we're doing this a little bit different process is because these are initiated by the county, and, um, there have been some concern about, I mean, basically, I think the planning board felt like they wanted to make sure that, as you said, the commissioners supported even moving forward with hearings. But th- there is a slightly shorter process you've laid out. If the commissioners would like this to come back to them as soon as possible.
Can that just be told to them without having a, I mean, I've never heard of, uh, the Board of Commissioners approving the planning board into a public hearing.
And i- in the conversation I had with Margaret, and you don't see this in your ordinance, um, you hadn't seen a lot of text amendments in the ordinance in quite a while. But in some local governments, the process is that the governing board starts by setting the public hearing, and the, the subtext to that is that they could summarily deny a matter, and just particularly text amendments, where you just say, we're not interested in doing that or considering it. I think that's really what we're doing here, is we want to indicate to the planning board whether the commission wished to even proceed at all of these or not. And so it's, I was, I was going to say it's an unusual process, but, but there is some, some precedence in other communities.
But if we don't vote, it could, it could and would delay it by a month, right?
At least.
So that's what.
Mr. Chairman.
And your last, I'm sorry, your last.
I'm planning to be gone by the middle of November, so this would put, this would put everything at your first of November, um, not November one, but the beginning of November meeting.
So that's the urgency of it for me.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with, uh, Commissioner Wilbon on, when a- all the people come to the planning board meeting, you know, the previous one, we had the first item on the agenda took three hours. And then it was a time of, we didn't get a, a really resolution on what had to proceed. But I agree with you that you don't, we as commissioners, unless you go to the planning board meeting, you don't really hear what people really feel about it. The other issue is that we voted, on my very first meeting, we voted to do away with this old, the new UDO that had been presented. We've been kicking that down the road for over two years, and I've been going to these planning board meetings. And so there was a sense of urgency, not only to get that finalized, but to get it finalized before Margaret leaves, and not lay that burden on a, a brand-new planning director coming in that didn't know anything about what's going on. And so that's why Commissioner Wilbon and myself went over and talked about it. We just heard today, Zachary again today said they're going to hire a thousand people. They're not going to be all people from Person County. A lot of these are going to be specialized people that my guess would be travel around the country. And they're going to need somewhere to put their campers and their travel trailers and so forth, and they're going to need somewhere to put them in an RV park. And we need to get that regulated and get that ready for them. They're going to be here, they said today, to twenty, thirty. That's five years. And it's probably going to be beyond that, because once they get the plants built, then they have to decommission and demo the existing coal plant. So they're going to be here a long time. And so we need to, to get this moved on down the road, and, and unless you can agree to stay another sixty days or something, I didn't think so. We need to, we need to get it done.
So since, um, the packet was out for the public, I feel like I should publicly say the typos.
Yeah, that's fine.
So what I was looking at had page numbers, and what's in front of me right now doesn't. But it, in the use table,
Yes.
towards the bottom, where it says retail sales, there were two entries for the retail sales, and the second entry got part of the description cut off, like the text didn't wrap. And then for, on pa- it was on page fourteen, what I was looking at, the solar energy system reference at the top of that page had a nine after the parentheses, and I think that was probably, you know, since the parentheses was over the nine, it was probably the nine wasn't supposed to be there. Um, and then it was at the top of page seventeen where it says, um, use specific, specific was misspelled, and I think that should be hyphenated so that it doesn't look like use specific. And then, um, I did have one question about, it was on page nineteen of what I was looking at, about the, um, the RV parks that set a maximum density to be twenty-five hundred square feet. And that's kind of confusing to me. Does, does that mean it can be less than twenty-five hundred? Or?
I'm really bad doing math on my feet, so what I, what that is meant to say, I believe, and what the current ordinance says, is that you must have twenty-five hundred square feet of land for each tent or trailer space. And I will make sure that the language that we put in there matches up with that. Now, whether that's maximum or minimum, I, sometimes I don't do that well on my feet, so I want, I want to get it right. But that, that's, that's what is intended to say, is that you must have twenty-five hundred square feet of land in the parcel, in the park, in the proposed park, for each and every campsite.
Okay, that was my question. Should it be maximum or minimum? Um, that was all I had.
I, I would just like to note that in the, since I did not get the, because of the other text amendment going on with the solar energy, I did not attempt to merge solar energy into the planning ordinance. I thought that would be too messy. So I want to make sure that, um, in the use table, I need to go pull the language for where the solar energy systems are allowed. Um, either take it out or refer you to the solar energy. I need to address that, because I had intended to pull it in, and with that other ordinance, it's not. I don't want anyone to mistake that a solar energy system is a utility system. As long as the solar energy system stands alone, that needs to be referenced correctly in this table. So that will be a change in this from what you've seen so far.
I, I wanted to ask them when they were at the planning board if, if what they said about how Duke buys power now makes the level two and level three obsolete. So I don't know if that's anything you think is worth looking at when you're changing it.
I think it's possible that, um, some, a, a, a company that wants to do their own solar power and not buy from the grid would still find those useful. But they may not need to be the two different levels. But I, I think that's kind of a problem for another day. Leave, leave them in for now, and let's not try and change too much all at once when we might get ourselves accidentally somewhere we didn't want to be.
Good point. So I make a motion to, what do I need to say? Have the planning board do a public hearing at their next board meeting in October?
So the public hearing, so there's, uh, the items that they, that already went to the planning board, which are the four bullet points in that agenda abstract, those were already included in the planning board packet. They have seen, um, that information. The other, uh, thing that has come up is a text amendment, the, and there's been some interest amongst the board members of moving, uh, special use permit decisions from the Board of Commissioners to the Board of Adjustment. So that's also what we're asking this morning is for the Board of Commissioners, if you would like for that to be in front of the planning board for public hearing, that you also vote on whether or not to send that to the planning board for a public hearing.
So for Commissioner Wilbon's motion to include short-term rentals, RV parks, permitted use of, uh, table consolidation and new definitions, consolidation organizations and special use permits. Commissioner Wilbon, does that reflect your motion?
Yes, and does that include striking that other language about short-term rentals that we talked about from the bottom of two and the top of three?
Yes. Yeah, that, that was just in the, in the planning board packet for reference. It wasn't meant to be proposed as text amendment.
Okay. Yes.
All right. We have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion?
Can, can I ask
Yes, ma'am.
the attorney a question on that? Since we have some per, special use permits kind of in the pipeline, does changing the review process on that give you any cause for pause?
It does not. Um, one thing I'm going to have to double check on is the permit choice statute, but I, I believe that permit choice gives you the right to have the substantive standards, not necessarily the process that's in place at that time. But if I am incorrect, I will certainly let you and the planning board know before it comes to them.
I just wanted to check on that change in the process when somebody's already got an active application that's complete.
All in favor of the motion as presented, please vote by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion's been approved. Thank you.
And to try and address the question about comments, we can, um, make an effort to get the minutes of the planning board public hearing in your packet so that you could see that. Um, we had just gone to shorter minutes, but maybe for the public hearings, we can try and at least characterize them as, you know, in favor and in opposition, and, and maybe a little bit of the substance so that you have a flavor of what, what they heard as well.
I mean, I don't think that has the same effect. I, I appreciate that.
I realize it's not the same as, as hearing the passion behind the person, but at least you would have a nose count of, of who said what.
Thank you so much. Uh, Chairman and Board, I will report that I attended the Person Industries fortieth anniversary, um, and, uh, had a great attendance there, and, um, appreciate all the leadership and dedication that that staff has done currently and over the years as well. County Manager.
And you just took my report, so I echo what, uh, Chairman Perrier said. That was a great event. We're excited to have that new, um, facility open.
Vice Chairman Thomas.
I'll report.
Commissioner Wilbon.
You'll report.
Commissioner Royster.
Yes, I'd like to report that I attended, um, Patriots Day on September sixth, and, um, that, you know, encouraged all of us not to forget, um, those who lost their lives, those who sacrificed, the families, um, impacted by the events on September eleventh. But, um, it was a really, um, inspirational ceremony, um, that was held on September sixth.
Commissioner Long.
Mr. Chairman, I've got several comments. Uh, first off, I want to thank the, uh, Person County School Board and Dr. Peterson on, on their, uh, award. They do, we're really lucky to have Dr. Peterson as our superintendent. I'd also like to ask everyone to pray for the Mark Hamrick family, who has a connection to Person County, Tina Greenstead Hamrick of the Mount Tersa Community. Her husband, Mark, was an employee of the North Carolina Marine Fisheries Commission. He was Employee of the Year in twenty-twenty-four for the North Carolina Division of Environmental Quality for his outstanding work in coastal conservation. They reside in Atlantic Beach, North Carolina. Mark died a hero saving his work associate last week during rough, rough weather conditions in the line of duty. Please remember his family in your prayers. I'm proud to call Mark my friend. I would also like to revisit the rural conservation versus rural development designation from my last Board of Commissioners meeting. I'll take responsibility for misinterpreting the question and discussion that had taken place with the planning board, but I do feel rural development is a more accurate description than rural conservation or just rural plainly. I'd also like to mention that the city of Roxborough elections are about to begin. I watched the city election forum this past week. The candidates discussed their visions for Roxborough and the city's need for large water customers for economic development and utilization of their water and sewer infrastructure, which brings me to taxes, economic development, and Microsoft. Everyone is entitled to your opinion. If you, as a citizen, want to pay the less taxes, have more good-paying jobs, then voice your opinion in support of Microsoft coming to Person County. Microsoft is a responsible worldwide company, and we are fortunate they have purchased the Person County Megasite. WRAL just this last week is asking questions about Microsoft and Person County. I do not have any information on Microsoft's plans for Person County. Those would be proprietary information. They would not want to share with their competitors, just as no other business would want to share their plans with their competitors. But I can tell you what I do have. I have a strong desire to work with Microsoft, and I will welcome Microsoft with open arms to Person County and any other corporations willing to make investments in Person County to grow our tax base and create good-paying jobs, and I'm unapologetic for it. Lastly, I'm a constitutionalist. I believe in the Constitution. I believe our government has to work for everyone. This is why we're about to celebrate two-hundred-and-fifty years of the United States of America. This past week, we all experienced an attack on our freedom of speech, your freedom of speech. I remember where I was when I learned of the assassination of President Kennedy, his brother Robert Kennedy, Malcolm X, and the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King. They were all great Americans. Assassination has no place anywhere in the world, but more especially in our republic, regardless of political party. I pray for our country, our republic, and Christians and other faiths everywhere in the world. Please join me in a moment of silence for Person County, the great state of North Carolina, and for America. Let us bow our heads for a moment, please. Amen. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, if I could respond to some of those comments?
Yes, ma'am.
I attended the Association of County Commissioners Conference since our la- since I was at a meeting here, and it was said in there that, um, over the next ten years, a trillion dollars of federal funding is going to get cut. And that is what comes down to the state and counties. Um, North Carolina has adopted a plan where our corporate income tax will go down to zero by twenty-thirty. So all the money that, you know, we talk about grants, 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 and, and that money is drying up. Um, so all the things that we have to fund as counties, if we don't steadfastly pursue economic development and investment, um, that's going to come from individual property taxes. So the, the vote on the rural development versus rural conservation was an economic development vote. There was no change to the permitted uses. Uh, in that district, right now, you can have anything from residential to industrial. Polywood is in that district, Louisiana Pacific is in that district. I don't think anybody would ride down that corridor and say that does not look like a rural area. Uh, those, those industries, specifically Louisiana Pacific, could not be located inside the city. Um, they need to be out there and have some buffer for what they do. So there was no change to use. There was nothing that would make it, um, less conserved or more developed. It was just to give it an accurate name. And where that comes up the most is when the director has an RFI, and she doesn't get a chance to explain to somebody what rural conservation means and what all the uses are that you can do. It goes in a spreadsheet that gets compared with a lot of other places that have, um, more accurately named districts. So that's what that was about, and I regret that I was not here. Um, I did share that with other board members when I knew I wasn't going to be here. Um, but if we don't steadfastly pursue industry recruitment, uh, when, you know, it doesn't happen overnight. We've got to be developing sites, and we've got to be recruiting. Um, I've seen through, at least three small businesses announce closures lately, and I'm aware of a cou- a couple more that may, that have not announced yet. So it affects, it's a trickle-down effect. So, you know, that's what I ran for, and that's what I support, and it is for the individual citizens of this county not to have to bear the burdens of what we're facing in the future when all these other tax revenues that fund these grants go away. So thank you for opening that up and bringing up that subject.
All right. At this time, I entertain a motion to go into closed session per genial statute 143-318.1185 to establish or to instruct the public body staff or negotiating agents concerning the position to be taken on behalf of the public body in negotiating the price or other material terms of a contract or proposed contract for the acquisition of real property by purchase, option, exchange, or lease, or in the amount of compensation or other material terms of an employment contract or proposed employment contract with the following individuals permitted to attend: County Manager Katherine Cathy, Clerk to the Board Michelle Solomon, County Attorney TC Morfis Jr., and Economic Development Director Brandy Lynch. Do I have a motion for that?
Someone.
All right. All in favor, please vote by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. We're now in the closed session. Any opposed? The ayes have it. We're now in the closed session.
All right. We're now back in open session. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Certainly.
All right. Have a motion. Any further discussion? Haven't hear or none. All in favor, please vote for saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The meeting has been adjourned.
Anything else?